Good evening. The July 21st, 2025 Legislative Session of the Anarundale County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please pray according to your practice as I pray according to mine. We come together today as a community seeking guidance and wisdom in our discussions. May we be united in purpose and open to the diverse perspective that each of us brings. We ask for clarity in our decision-making and the strength to serve the best interests of our constituents. Let our conversations be respectful and productive, and may we work together to create a better future for all. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located in the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Before we open our discussions and public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, that we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received 38 pieces which were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. So our first six: David Corrigan, Kurt Svenson, Julia Howes, Jared Karchewski, Kyle Nimhard, and Jignan Patel. And I see we have one seat still available, so Paul Bush. You are here, you may come up as well. All right. And sir, you can get started down on this end.
Hi, I'm Jared Karchewski. I live on White Star Crossing in Pasadena, Mr. Volkey's district. Last time I was before you, I asked that you step up and look at the bigger picture before making rash decisions. I watched the video from last time you were in this chamber and noticed that some of you were asking very good questions. A subset of those questions came from your own constituents, people who had more expertise in pertinent fields than you do. I applaud you on this. This is a step in the right direction. Now, while I sit before you, I am here to ask what you are doing to ensure that you do better moving forward. Mr. Volkey, Ms. Pickard, what actions are you taking to get the Jumper's Hole project back on track to advocate for the safety of your constituents? There was supposed to be a traffic light installed on Jumper's Hole Road at the intersection of Evening Star and Ashbury, serving approximately 1,150 residents. This was intended to have already happened and be both a Phase 1 and a study on the effects that the light's timing would have on the Ashbury, Creekstone, and Woodhome communities. This light has not been installed, and there is no indication of forward movement. I ask that you step up and make sure that this project moves forward, because one voice should not be hampering the benefit that would be serving over 1,000 homes.
Thank you, Mr. Karchewski. Am I saying it correctly?
You did.
Karchewski. Okay. Mr. Svenson.
Kurt Svenson, Arnold, Maryland. My testimony tonight is not about Bill 6525, but is rather an extension of my previous general testimony about the need to amend the county's supplement to the homeowner's property tax credit. I think it's important to understand the purpose of this program directly pulled from the State of Maryland website. It sets a limit on the amount of property taxes an eligible homeowner must pay based on a sliding scale of gross household income. Those allowable percentages and related income thresholds are the very core of this program. At last week's council work session, Budget Officer Trumbauer said, quote, "The income thresholds aren't changing because I think they are set by the state." That is simply not true, and I want to clarify that fact on the public record. Mr. Trumbauer was gracious enough to meet with me late last week for what turned out to be a productive discussion. Much was clarified, and I'm cautiously optimistic that pending legislation will address this. But let me be clear about the economic justice problem with the existing supplement. The income thresholds associated with each allowable percentage tier have not been updated for 20 years. The eroding impact of inflation has eliminated or greatly lowered the value of the minimal benefit for those most in need. Please correct this long-neglected oversight. In follow-up to our discussion, I offer the attached side-by-side and color-coded comparison between the as-is and the inflation-adjusted schedules to help focus on the key metric: tax burden as a percent of gross household income. That's where the value judgment lies, and I suggest you evaluate this using both an affordability and equity lens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Svenson. Ms. Patel.
Hi, my name is Jignan Patel. I live in the Sun Valley neighborhood of Glen Burnie. I am not talking about workforce housing tonight. The developers of the Spencer Glen Nixon property submitted several modification requests to the county, including floodplain disturbance, wetland buffer, and stream buffer modifications. These requests were submitted to allow the developer to build a walking path from our community to Sun Valley Park. If you're not from our area, it seems like a good idea. However, the reality is that this walking path would connect our very low-crime community to the high-crime apartment complex across the street from Sun Valley Park. I expressed my concerns to planning and zoning and was shocked to learn that crime is not a consideration when modification requests are submitted, and that modification requests are rarely denied. In all the modification requests submitted by the developer, they stated, end quote, "modification will not adversely affect public health, safety, or welfare." This is simply not true. The developer's need to meet an active recreation requirement should never be prioritized over the safety and peace of mind of your existing communities. I lived in that apartment complex when I was a little kid. I saw my first homicide victim, not as an adult working in healthcare, but as a five-year-old in that apartment complex, and nothing has changed in the 35 years since then. This is just some of the criminal activity over recent years that I was able to find without submitting an official records request, and I have dates and case numbers for each incident. And I'll start here. Homicide, armed robbery of the mailman, burglary, shooting contact, robbery, citizen, shooting, non-contact, shooting, non-contact, drug violation where they found guns and lots of drugs, attempted armed robbery, citizen, armed robbery, citizen, shooting, non-contact, stabbing, first-degree assault, armed assault, shooting, more drug violations, more drug weapons violations, shooting, contact. And so the walking path that the developer wants to create, because it meets some active recreation requirement, would connect my... And in the same time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Mr. Nimhard.
Hi, Kyle Nimhard, 7809 Maple Row Court. I'm going to humbly request that I get to go before Jigno when we do our testimony. He does a good job. I didn't prepare any formal written remarks, County Council, today, but I did want to express my pleasure at seeing Bill 7225 introduced by Councilman Volkey. Councilman Volkey, thank you very much. I haven't had a chance to read it in depth, but based on my first glance at it, I think it generally speaks well to exactly what we were talking about in the several months we've come and testified. I think tying a transportation element to development is a sign of smart growth. I also wanted to point out something that I failed to mention in my last testimony is that, again, I've always spoke to how the developer of the Spencer Glen property is exploiting the Workforce Housing Act. And so, I mean, a good example of that, again, is that Anarundale County is approving of the development at the Glen Burnie Light Rail, which has direct access to high-capacity transit, high-capacity highways and roadways, ripe for workforce housing development, but there's no workforce housing included in that development. But this particular developer wants to include it in an area that's secluded. And I think this bill does a good job to make sure that the Workforce Housing Act is protected against people who are seeking to use that act in a... malicious may be a strong word, I just can't find another word right now, but in a disingenuous way, I would say. So again, I commend the Council for taking this up. I look forward to working with the Council and reading this in more detail. And again, I appreciate your attention to this, Mr. Volkey. And I also wanted to give a shout-out to your Legislative Assistant, Sarah Gannon, for taking this issue up, hearing us out, and even taking a drive through the neighborhood to see exactly what we've been talking about. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bush.
Hi. Lou?
Mr. Bush, I'm from Shadyside, and I'm here about that Discovery Village boat ramp that was closed down. It's a very good ramp to have for the community. I used the Parish Creek when it was backyard boats for like 10 years. That boat ramp is really skinny, side-by-side, there's a lot of obstacles getting in and out, and then there was a lot of arguments among people using that. Limited parking, not many facilities there to use, but the Discovery Boat Ramp is used constantly. I use it three to four times a week from like May to November. And to recommend that we drive an hour to Fort Smallwood or Glen Burnie is really not acceptable when I'm towing an 8,000-pound boat up and down the road. I think the county needs to revisit what they negotiated with that owner, because that building and the property has been in disarray for at least 15 years. I mean, it's really in bad shape. The best part is that ramp, the ramp, the pier goes up and down to let people get on and off with ease. The other places is a little bit of a danger of getting on and off. And the other ramp that is accessible is in deal, and now that one is being a yearly fee that a lot of people can't afford. My sons can't afford to go out every week for $25, $50 for two days, you know? So I think they need to go back and take a look and see what they can do with that owner, or... I know it's a lot of money, purchase property, because now you're taking away from recreational watermen that go out on the weekends, people that kayak and paddleboard, there's a launch right there. So you're cutting off a lot of accessible water for people.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Howes.
Good evening, Council. Julia Howes, 5624 Shadyside Road, Churchton. I'm the President and CEO of the Southern Anarundale Chamber of Commerce. I thought I was engaged in the budget process, but unfortunately, I completely missed the amendment on the virtual June 10th meeting, where the council voted on Amendment Number 54, where they decided to save $156,000 of the $37,914 million Rec and Parks budget determined to terminate the lease at Discovery Village Park and Boat Ramp. Shadyside is a peninsula community, and many of our residents and businesses rely on traffic coming into the area from other parts of the county. With the Discovery Village Boat Ramp being open, many of our businesses saw an increase in traffic. People would stop at one of the convenience stores for drinks, food, bait, ice, or other necessities for their trip. They would take a stop at the auto repair store for a plug in their trailer tire or have a repair done. They would take the family to the ice cream shop after a hot day, or stop at the grocery store for dinner to go along with that day's catch. They would dock at a local restaurant and grab a meal. The Boat Ramp was being used more than 100 times a year. Data provided to you was incorrect. We need you to look into that and to figure out what the real numbers are. We saw it at our businesses, we saw it on our waterways. The residents of Anarundale County were using the Boat Ramp. We need our council members to put the pressure on our county executive to bring the Boat Ramp back. The council made the decision to terminate the lease and close it. This council needs to listen to residents and fix the mistakes that were made in June. The Boat Ramp and the park were not utilized to its full potential, and it should have been. Why was the $300,000 invested in the bulkhead and then to terminate the lease less than two years later? Rec and Parks were negligent in their signage for the Boat Ramp, their maintenance on the Boat Ramp, and their marketing of the Boat Ramp. Rec and Parks failed to do anything with Discovery Village Park for nine years. Anarundale County failed to act on the sale of the property, which, according to the lease, they had the right of refusal on. Southern Anarundale County might be small, but we are mighty, and we will continue to show up and ask to be included in Anarundale County, the same way North County, West County, Annapolis, and other parts of the county are. Bring back the Boat Ramp in the southern part of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howes. David Corrigan, is he here? Okay, not here. All right. If there's anyone else here who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes.
Hello. Okay. My name is Bill Sherbo, President of Anarundale County Watermen's Association. I was here last month. I sent you guys a letter. I thank you for letting me speak, and I reside at 1252 West River Road in Shadyside. I'm here just to remind you about the ramp in Shadyside at Discovery Village. I think the council's decision was not appropriate, and it was rushed, and I think it needs to be revisited. The county council was not presented all of the facts from Rec and Parks, as you probably, since the last time, have probably, I would hope, looked into this matter a little bit, more than the night in June that you had to make a decision. That you did not have to make a decision. I mean, you went nine years without making a decision, and it just showed up here, and you all rushed to judgment. I also want to remind you that there's a price floating around of $3 million that the county has invested in this thing, but what I want to remind you is that it was not all county funds that went into that Discovery Village. There was also a lot of state funds from the Waterway Improvement Fund that went into that. Lots of money, close to half a million dollars. Okay? Park and Recs may have come in here. I wasn't at the meeting, but they may be stressing the finances of Discovery Village. But they don't have a problem with the ball field in Galesville that they spent $2.5 million on that nobody uses. It's a beautiful ball field, but nobody uses it. Okay? The ramp in Shadyside is used every day of the week, 365 days a year. The watermen use it in the wintertime. It's used 40, 50, to over 100 times on the weekends. Keep it in mind. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Get me in.
Hello, my name's Lisa Aerosmith. I've spoken with most of you before. I'm the Chair of the Public Water Access Committee, and I'm also here about the Discovery Village public Boat Ramp closure. There's enough second guessing to go around here, so I'm going to try and tell you some things you may not know. There was an op-ed in the Capitol today or yesterday suggesting a system of stickers and private, you know, at public access to private marinas. And I spoke with Jessica Lay's last Friday, and that suggestion has come up over and over and over again over the years, when people who don't want a public Boat Ramp in their neighborhood say, oh, we should, you know, get these, a consortium of private Boat Ramp owners in place of building new public Boat Ramps. Well, somewhere between probably 2016 and 2018, the county commissioned a very expensive study of every Boat Ramp in the county that is listed in the Department of Public Works' Boat Ramp roster. They sent out letters to each one. When they didn't get a response, they followed up repeatedly with letters and phone calls. And it resulted in a very... The digital file was huge, because it included a scan of each response from each Boat Ramp. And the result was nothing. Not one positive response, as I remember, and some of the refusals were startlingly hostile. So to say that we should start this, again, this process of trying to work with private marina owners on a county-wide basis, I think the first step is to go find that... It was a pretty expensive study. It was about $50,000, as I recall, you know? And it's not that old, and marina ownership does not turn over that fast. Go back and look at the responses, you know, the overwhelmingly negative responses to the same concept that was brought to the county, you know? This is a good-faced study, done professionally, so thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Aerosmith.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council. Matt Minahan, Chair of the Growth Action Network, Edgewater, Maryland. I have a 180-degree different view than Ms. Aerosmith has. The county needs to provide much, much, much more water and boat access than it is providing right now. And losing Discovery Village is a huge burden on the watermen and waterwomen and boaters in the South County. You need to fix that problem. But fixing that problem is different from providing much, much wider, broader access and many more access points in the county. And the best way to do that is to partner with 5, 10, 15 marinas who are interested and willing, pay them an annual fee to accommodate county boaters, and increase the access and the access points around the county. Yeah, your June decision was probably rushed, possibly without all the full information. Fix that as you can, buy the property if you want to, but frankly, that's a small instance of a larger problem. And until the county gets serious about providing much greater access to water throughout the 530 miles of the county watershed, I think we're doing a gross injustice to our citizens. This is a social justice issue that I think we need to pay much more attention to, and I encourage you to consider public-private partnerships to do this. And you had a survey in 2016? Fine, do it again. I guarantee you, you can find, with the right... If you paid enough money, you could find 5, 10 marinas who would be glad to take on this role. And that's my testimony. And one more thing. We haven't forgotten in GaN that hybrid meetings are still desirable by the citizenry, and we hope that your next Rules Committee meetings, you will take them up again and allow these citizens to testify from home. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Paul Higgins, 8084 Woodhome Circle. Last meeting, you all were accused of kicking the can down the road in the Capitol projects on the Jumper's Hole Road project. I would say you were acting responsibly, as should the people that sit at this table and talk to you. My testimony tonight is more geared towards some accountability, because we do not have accountability. In Bill 5425, last meeting, members at this table had to be walked back into their testimony from what they testified to this council. There's no way that should occur. If that man over there did that on his job, he'd be fired for making the wrong decision. We cannot tolerate that out of any of our county employees, especially if they're pushing an agenda. I recently got a letter, and I'm not going to bring the project up, but I'd like to read one paragraph, two paragraphs. It says, "Although alternate routes exist for vehicles to reach Maryland 2 and 177 coming from unsignaled side streets along Jumper's Hole Road, we cannot officially recommend the occupants go through shopping centers since it is not a public right-of-way." The next paragraph goes on to tell the folks at Woodhome, they can make two rights and reach Route 2 by going through the same shopping center. They just told me in the paragraph before, they would not recommend to the neighborhood that was advocating for the signal. To me, that's inconsistent data in the same letter from the county. And this is the stuff that we got to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing no movement, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Seeing no movement, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the legislative session of July 7th, 2025.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:04 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Mr. Volkey and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the legislative session of July 7th, 2025? So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of the legislative session of July 7th, 2025 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 6725, An Ordnance Concerning Floodplain Management, Erosion and Sediment Control, and Stormwater Management: Clearing and Pruning. Bill Number 6825, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Animal Rescue. Bill Number 6925, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Residential Districts' Conditional Use Workforce Housing. Bill Number 7025, An Ordnance Concerning Equity and Human Rights: Reasonable Accommodation. Bill Number 7125, An Ordnance Concerning Public Campaign Financing: Disbursement of Public Contribution: Funding of Public Campaign Financing Fund. Bill Number 7225, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses Workforce Housing. Bill Number 7325, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Special Exception Use: Power Driving in Marine Construction Operations. Bill Number 7425, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning BWI Mixed-Use Overlay Area Car Washes. And Bill Number 7525, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Youth Nature Immersion Program.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 2125, Resolution Appointing Members of the Salary Standard Commission.
Okay. We will vote on Resolution Number 2125 at the end of our meeting this evening. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5525 as amended.
Bill Number 5525, An Ordnance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anarundale County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lori Blair Klosmire, Deputy County Attorney, Billy Penley, our Controller, and David Gregory, our Bond Counsel for McKenon, Shelton, and Hen. Bill 5525 was discussed at the previous council meeting, and it is the county's annual bond ordinance that concerns the issuance, sale, and delivery of the county's general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes. It was amended at the last meeting to correct certain dollar amounts to reflect the final budget as passed, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any discussion from colleagues? Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5525 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
No one signed up ahead of time? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 5525? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 5525 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5525 as amended.
Bill Number 5525, An Ordnance Concerning the Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Anarundale County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5525 as amended.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Feidler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5525 as amended has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1725.
Resolution Number 1725, Resolution Providing Host Jurisdiction Approval of the Issuance of Private Activity Bonds for Financing of the Village at Providence Point.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lori Blair Klosmire, Deputy County Attorney, at the table with me, along with David Gregory, our Bond Counsel, and Cindy Walters, the CEO of National Lutheran Communities and Services. The Villages at Providence Point is a nonprofit Maryland corporation that has applied to the Public Finance Authority for an issuance of bonds to finance acquisition and construction of a continuing care retirement community located on about 50 acres in Annapolis, Maryland, and is seeking host jurisdiction approval from the county for the issuance of private activity bonds. The community is expected to include 246 independent living units, 16 assisted living memory care units, and 16 skilled nursing beds, and as of July 25... And as of July 2025, has 171 10% deposits received from depositors with move-ins expected to begin in 2028. Upon stabilization, the county, the community expects to employ approximately 110 full-time equivalent positions in the county. And the host jurisdiction approval is a requirement of the federal Internal Revenue Regulations. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any discussion? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 1725. Madam Secretary, did, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Volkey.
Keep going, I'll just catch you on that.
Okay. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 1725? Seeing no movement, public hearing on Resolution Number 1725 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1725.
Resolution Number 1725, Resolution Providing Host Jurisdiction Approval of the Issuance of Private Activity Bonds for Financing of the Village at Providence Point.
Okay. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This might be a question for Mr. Hunt or for the Office of Law. Have we done this previously with other projects in the county?
Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. The only ones that I've been involved in have been volunteer fire companies that take loans for equipment. Those are considered private activity bonds. It's the same section of the IRS Code, just a different subsection.
Understood, understood. But this, the reason I'm asking is I don't remember ever seeing this. I don't remember hearing about this where there's an entity that's a, it sounds like a not-for-profit entity that is coming in and seeking county financing to take advantage of a particular section in the IRS Code.
It's not county financing. They're actually, and Mr. Gregory can probably explain this too, but they're going, they are getting private, a private bond issuer to issue bonds. There's no county money, there's no county involvement. But the federal regulations require that the host jurisdiction, where the project is located, give some type of approval of the fact that they're going out and getting this private bond funding. For whatever reason, the feds want that, but that's.
What is that reason?
I don't 100% know. But under the IRS Code, what happens is the interest on the bonds is non-taxable. And so that's what ultimately is happening here.
Does it become like a municipal bond at that point?
They're not a municipal bond, no. Just a non-taxable.
Just trying to work this into like things that I can understand.
Yeah. Mr. Gregory may be able to fill some of the blanks there, but.
That's a great summary. The issuer is Public Finance Authority. They're based in Wisconsin. They have, believe it or not, authority to issue bonds throughout the country for any project that fits their statutory purpose, which includes nonprofits that engage in the type of projects that National Lutheran is engaging in. And Public Finance Authority holds its own TEFRA hearing in Wisconsin. And as was described by Ms. Blair, the federal income tax regulations require, notwithstanding the Wisconsin approval, that the local jurisdiction in which the project is located also hold approval so that, frankly, so that members of the public could speak on it. And so that it's been published and it's been, you know, duly held in a meeting in accordance with the IRS regs, which require the notice to be given at least seven days before this hearing, which it was. And it's kind of the groundwork before a bond issue is able to get financed. And the bonds, as described, are private activity bonds under Section 145 of the Internal Revenue Code. And the county is not issuing those bonds. And the county, of course, has no obligation or liability on the project. It's simply facilitating local host approval so that National Lutheran can go forward with Public Finance Authority. And I know that's a lot, but that's.
I hear you. I guess where I'm coming at it, and this is not in any way negative about what we're doing, but it doesn't make any sense to me why we would have any say in this at all. Like, when you're looking at this, we're not issuing the bonds, we're not holding it. We have nothing to do with this, but we somehow have to do this, check the box vote, which we will do because, of course, we want this. But I just don't get why the IRS Code requires that.
The tax code before 1986 did not require it. The pre-86 tax law did not have a TEFRA requirement.
Yeah.
In 1986, the IRS Code included TEFRA requirements and just has never looked, well, they really haven't looked back at the substance. I shouldn't say they've never looked back. They have looked back in terms of allowing issuers to put it on websites as opposed to the newspaper. But the general requirement has been in there since 1986.
Wow. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. That was enlightening.
Yes. All right. Yes, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You clarified that in, I think, less than five minutes. It took me three to five hours to Google and research online. So I really should have reached out to you. I don't know how much experience you have with these types of resolutions and local jurisdictions. Do you know if these are done often statewide, or?
So, I'll do my best here. So there are various statewide issuers in Maryland that can get TEFRA approval from the governor. For example, Maryland Health and Higher Educational Facilities Authority is a state issuer. Because they're a state issuer, they get approval from the governor. Medco is also a state issuer. They need to go to the governor for approval. And if you're getting approval within another jurisdiction, for example, Anarundale County, the highest elected official in the county, in this case, of course, the county executive, needs to sign off on the hearing. So if you're going through a state issue, the governor can sign the TEFRA as the highest state-ranking official. And as I say, if you're going through a county, it would, it would be a county executive approval.
Fascinating. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Rodbien.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer a District 6 perspective here on this project. I wanted to let my colleagues know that this project has been in discussion for quite some time. I'm sure someone at the table could say the exact timeframe, but I would guess close to a decade. And there definitely has been contention in the past. But I think the community and National Lutheran have worked really hard to come up with a compromise. As my colleagues all know, we are a by-right development jurisdiction, meaning that a landowner can develop under the, under the, under, basically, they can develop their property as long as they're following the zoning that's allowed. And to National Lutheran's credit, they're putting the vast majority of this property into a conservation easement that would be not developed, or they've agreed not to develop that. And if one of you at the table would like to give details on that, I know folks in the public might be curious to just hear that detail because I know that, you know, large developments like this or larger developments like this can often be contentious. But I think you've worked really hard with the community to come to a good place.
Yeah, thank you so much. This is Cindy Walters, President and CEO of National Lutheran. And yes, we will be, the project will be on 50 acres, and over 100 acres will be put into a conservation easement as part of our agreement to do so.
Excellent. So, any other comments from my colleagues? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1725.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1525 has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1825.
Resolution Number 1825, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Cost of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employer Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney, Kelly Lovett, our Assistant Personnel Officer, Talia Frentz, our Senior Personnel Analyst. We also have a benefits consultant from Aon in attendance, as well as Stephen Thoreau, our Deputy Budget Officer. So, Resolution 1925, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Resolution 1825 approves the annual health care costs for county employees. This is a resolution we do every year. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from my colleagues? Mr. Smith?
I think for the public, if you can just give a general sort of summation of what significant increases, lower increases compared to last year. I know I can read it, but just for the record, just to stay there, if you can.
Kelly Lovett, Assistant Personnel Officer. For the increases this year, we have a 6% increase this year for active employees and retirees. And we are, we do have a new medical vendor this year for active employees. We're going back to Care First this year. I thought you all might want to know that, for our actives. And we'll still be with CVS for our pharmaceutical benefits. Unfortunately, the costs keep going up, but we try to keep the lid on them. But, but 6% this year.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 1825. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 1825? Seeing no movement, public hearing on Resolution Number 1825 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1825.
Resolution Number 1825, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Cost of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employer Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1825.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1825 has been adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5925.
Bill Number 5925, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Credited Service, Deferred Retirement Option Program, Known as DROP. Number of Participants, Term of Participation Period, Interest on Drop Account, Employee Contributions to Pension Fund.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, Kelly Lovett, our Assistant Personnel Officer, Lynn Dach, our Senior Personnel Analyst, and Stephen Thoreau, our Assistant Budget Officer. Bill 5925 implements certain changes to the pension plans based on the results of union negotiations with various collective bargaining units this past year. It adds a seventh year of drop participation for classifications, Correctional Programs Specialist and Criminal Justice Programs Specialist, also changes the number of IAFF member participants eligible to enter drop in the fire plan from four per month to 20 per quarter and is capped at 72 annually, as well as modifying the annual interest rates for drop accounts for participants in police and IAFF member participants in fire service retirement plans from 4.25% to 5%, and increases the amount of employee pension contributions for IAFF members from 7.25% to 8%. And for all participants in the police plan, from 7.25% to 8.25%. As well as cleaning up some changes in Sections 5-1, 205A, and 5-4, 103. Happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick, on the cap, the 20, up to, I guess, 72 per calendar year, I believe, what was the sort of rationale between those, like, how did those numbers get selected?
Kelly Lovett, Assistant Personnel Officer. Well, it was definitely part of the negotiations discussion during collective bargaining with the IFF. And what we have seen is that there, we had a four-per-month, which was the previous cap. Sometimes there are bigger classes that are now reaching that 20-year mark where they can start going into drop. And what we saw last year is we had a group of, you know, seven that were trying to get in the same month because they hit their anniversary, and then we had to put them on a waitlist. They do eventually get to go into the drop, but it does, you know, it's by seniority, longest time of service. So I wasn't privy to the negotiations, but I think the idea was to mirror close to what the FOP has.
Another question. For the retirees that are available for drop, and you can probably get this information back to me via email if you don't have it now. What is the average terms of service? Like, how many years have they been in at this point with the accounting employees that we do have that are eligible for it?
Well, they have to have at least 20 years of service to go into the drop. So I don't know off the top of my head what the average for people that are in the drop now.
Well, no, no, not who are in the drop. The average number of years that folks who are, who will be, like in the fire department, for example. If we have 800 employees, the average years of service that the firefighter has is like 10, if you look at the median.
Yeah.
So that'll let us know that as we get closer over the next four, three or four or five years, as.
Planning.
Yes, for planning purposes. I'm trying to figure out where we are age-wise within our employees who might be eligible because that obviously will impact that number in the future potentially. And so I'm just curious where we are today.
I don't have that off the top of my head. And that's certainly something we can provide to you in an email. And I know that the chief, the fire chief always has an interest in that as well as the police chief for their planning purposes. So, yeah, we can put that together, and Lynn or I will send you an email.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And lastly, if you could, I'll co-sponsor this. I'd like.
Noted, thank you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm looking at the fiscal note. There seems to be a difference between the fiscal note and the legislative and fiscal summary. Because, Mr. Hunt, you said that this increases police plan participation number from 7.25 to 8.25, but the fiscal note says that for police and fire, it's 7.25 to 8. So which one is right? So on page two of the fiscal note, and it's on page one at the bottom of that first summary paragraph on page one of the legislative summary.
Stephen Thoreau from Budget Office, it's 8%.
8%.
It's 3/4 of a percent.
Okay. For both, for police and fire? So there's not, so it's not like police are going to 8.25?
Correct.
Because I was curious why there was a difference there. Okay. And then if I'm understanding the fiscal note correctly, so it's the Budget Office's projection that this change will cost $762,821 for the existing participants in drop? Page two, where you have the fiscal. Okay. But then you say further on, based on salaries, that it's going to generate an additional 1.375 in annual revenue. Are you saying that the 1.375 is above that 762? Or that's after factoring in the 762?
So there's two, there's two independent things happening here.
Got it, okay.
So in the fiscal note, you'll see Exhibit 1 was the drop interest rate. That's only, so just the drop piece that's changing the interest rate, it's going to generate an expenditure of an additional $760,000.
Okay.
Then the change for the employees contribution, the pension contribution, is going to generate revenue of about $1.4 million.
So who's kicking it? You're saying the distinction between the 7.25 to 8% jump is what's going to generate the 1.3 to make this sustainable?
Correct.
Okay. Because I guess how I'm looking at it is you're 762 now with the existing universe of people you have, but you're opening up the universe. You're going from under IAFF, 12 per quarter to 20 per quarter. So you're increasing eight more people. So that's a significant jump. I haven't even done the math on what the police part is yet with that. But if you do that, and now those additional people are going into drop who are not making pension contributions anymore, and then that's going to increase this, what are like our projections in terms of the 762 number? What does it grow to over time? How does that offset with the 1.375? Like, what does all that look like?
So a lot of it will obviously depend on who enters the drop, how many people enter the drop, how many years of service they have, what their salaries are, et cetera. The same thing also for the pension contribution, right? As salaries grow, that pension contribution will also grow, right?
Sure, sure, yeah.
So, it depends on employee behavior of exactly what that's going to look like. But this is what we have based on the data that's available right now.
Have we modeled that employee behavior based on what we've seen people do in the past to what we think they're going to do in the future? Like, when we've added additional years of drop, have we seen people stay longer, which I think we have? So, can we sort of extrapolate there?
So, you can see right here what the years in drop are currently.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
Right, so they're all roughly five years, roughly. So, and we added the seventh year of drop, I believe, for both of these bargaining units within the last few years.
Right.
No, I believe fire and police already have seven.
Did we do that? Okay, so it's just the seventh for corrections?
Corrections.
Just for the CPSs, the Correctional Programs Specialist and the Criminal Justice Program Specialist Supervisors.
I feel like when we came into office, we were at drop at five years, I want to say. So, it was five or six.
Five or six, and it depended on the plan.
Yeah, 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 okay. But anyway, so to your point about extrapolations.
Yeah, so I would anticipate, yes, that number probably is going to go up. There's probably pretty unlikely that it doesn't go up. But again, so will the pension contribution as employee salaries grow. What that exact relationship is, I don't have a crystal ball.
You know how I love that answer. So, if I do the math on that, if the 762 is the cost of the county, but you're going to increase the pension contributions by 1.3, then your offset's a little over 600. Am I doing that math correctly or is that apples and oranges?
Roughly, right. I mean, yes, I mean, it's all a cost of the county, yeah.
Right, so there's an offset component to this that you've got in the fiscal note. It doesn't say it, but it's there if you do the math.
It is, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Is that it? You done, Mr. Volkey? I don't mean that ugly, I'm just asking. All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 1825. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 1825?
I'm sorry, we are on Bill Number 5925.
Oh, I'm sorry. What are we on? I'm sorry, I lost.
Bill Number 5925.
Sorry, I'm jumping, I was looking back on my script to have that. So, anyway, let's go back to that. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 5925. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 5925? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 5925 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5925.
Bill Number 5925. An Ordinance Concerning Pensions, Credited Service, Deferred Retirement Option Program, Known as Drop. Number of Participants, Term of Participation Period, Interest on Drop Account, Employee Contribution to Pension Fund.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5925.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5925 has passed.
All right, thank you all. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6025.
Bill Number 6025. An Ordinance Concerning Annapolis Road Special Community Benefit District. Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
All right, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Stephen Theroux, our Assistant Budget Officer, Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. Bill 6025 is for the Annapolis Road Special Community Benefits District, which seeks to enter into a loan with Shore United Bank in the amount of $640,000 with a term of 15 years to be used to purchase commercial property and unimproved lots at 2632, 2634, and 2638 Carrollton Road, Annapolis, Maryland, to enable the association to obtain the loan. The county is undertaking the obligation set forth in this ordinance, which would impose these special taxes for the purpose of repayment of the loan. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6025. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6025? All right, seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 6025 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6025.
Bill Number 6025. An Ordinance Concerning Annapolis Road Special Community Benefit District. Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6025.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6025 has passed.
Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6125.
Bill Number 6125. An Ordinance Concerning Epping Forest Special Community Benefit District. Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
All right, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table again, Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, and Stephen Theroux, our Assistant Budget Officer. This bill is similar to the last one in that Epping Forest Association, or Epping Forest Incorporated, the civic community association that administers the Epping Forest Special Community Benefits District, is seeking to enter into a loan with Manufacturers and Trust Company, known as M&amp;T Bank, for a loan in the amount of $1.5 million with a term of 10 years, amortized over 20 years to be used for renovation and replacement of the community marina to enable the association to obtain the loan from M&amp;T Bank. The county is undertaking the obligation set forth in this ordinance, which would levy the special taxes for the benefit of repayment of the loan. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Have any comments? Mr. Smith?
Madam Chair, there was obviously a significant amount of email traffic on this. I was curious if Ms. Rodbien or the administration was going to bring that up.
Ms. Rodbien.
Yes, I was going to wait until we had the public testimony, but there are some additional questions that I would like to review with our Office of Law. So, after the public testimony, I would like, I will be making a motion to hold the vote so we can review a few remaining questions.
Okay. So, in case folks didn't hear that, Ms. Rodbien is going to move to hold this bill until next time, but we will still have the public hearing to hear from people today. So, all right, no other questions. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6125. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received seven pieces, which were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Signed up ahead of time, we have two people, Stacy Corbalack and Kevin Barner. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6125, you may come up at this time as well. All right, Ms. Corbalack.
Good evening, Chair Hummer and County Council Members. My name is Stacy Corbalack, 451 Honering Trail, Annapolis, Maryland, and I am the current President of Epping Forest, Inc. I'm here to speak in support of Bill 6125, which will allow Epping Forest to repay a 10-year loan to M&amp;T Bank for the purpose of renovating our 50-plus-year-old existing marina. Because this loan will encumber SCBD funds, we put this project and loan before the community for a vote on Sunday, April 13th. And in accordance with Article 3 of our Constitution, any one title holder was allowed to vote. And in accordance with Article 4 of our bylaws, absentee votes were permitted if returned to our secretary at least two days prior to the date of the meeting. Our bylaws do not allow for electronic voting or proxy voting at this time. As has been our practice for many years, the votes were tallied by two long-term community members after the meeting on April 13th. And in addition, the ballots were audited by two board members that same week. Please note, none of the community members involved in the original count or audit rent slips at this marina. In addition, our voting process was reviewed by our outside counsel, Sarah Arthur, who is here tonight on April 16th, and certified by a majority of our 11 board members that same evening. The final vote was 115 in favor of the marina and loan, and 64 opposed. Nearly two to one were in favor of the marina and loan. The Epping Forest Boat Club has since put the project out for bid and is ready to move forward with finalizing the design, the loan, and beginning demolition of the old marina in October. The boat club will be using the loan, I mean, using slip fees and their cash reserves to pay for the cost of the marina loan. We are asking the council to approve the loan tonight so we can move forward with the project this fall without any further delay. Thank you.
Mr. Barner.
Good evening, Chair Hummer and esteemed members of the council. My name is Kevin Barner. I'm the President of Epping Forest Boat Club. I'm at 346 Epping Way in Epping Forest, been there for 35 years. And I'm here tonight to urge support for Bill 6125. This loan is necessary for the completion of our five-year effort by the boat club members and professionals to deliver a safe, efficient marina. Our goal is to expand access for community members that if not have access, we have a long waitlist, and this would help us remedy that situation. Again, we're trying to replace and renovate a 50-year-old, or 50 to 60-year-old marina. The trans, as Ms. Corbalack said, it was a transparent and inclusive process, a five-year transparent process was conducted with several regular and special meetings in the community and strict compliance with our bylaws. It was an iterative marina design shaped by community input over these five years. Marina resource usage fees were significantly increased three to four years ago to ensure that planning, regulatory efforts, and final construction costs could be satisfied by the boat club and its facility users without undue burden on the community. We have partnered with a professional organization, Applied Technology and Management, a GeoSynTech company with 35-plus years of marina design experience, ATM-managed competitive bidding process, securing a $1.9 million bid from a local, well-established, and well-known marina contractor who is committed to a schedule to begin in November and be completed by May in the off-season. Cost-saving measures have been taken. Our consultant that we hired and the contractor are collaborating even currently along with boat club and other community members to ensure budget adherence, for example, optimized deck size, utilities, and certain optional features. All regulatory approvals have been obtained. MDE issued a title, wetlands license. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has permitted a, granted a letter of permission and no environmental concerns during the February 1st to February 1st. Public notice was, I urge the council to vote on this and pass Bill 6125 tonight because any extended delay is going to really throw us into a problem because of extension fees.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Delia DeShane. I am a resident of Epping Forest. I'm also a native Anarondle County person. I grew up in Anarondle County. I went to Anarondle County Public Schools, and I wanted to first and foremost thank all of you for your service. I raised my family in Epping Forest, as I have for the past 13 years, and I own two houses there. I really love it. And I love every person in this room who lives there, even if we don't agree on this marina expansion. I've served on, I served on the Board of Directors as legal chair for nearly the last four years, and I just recently retired in June. I may not have lived here as long as some other folks have lived here or in Epping Forest, but I also understand how Epping Forest works, how board decisions are made, and have been made regarding this project. This loan is intended to fund a new marina. No question, that is a failing marina, and it needs to be addressed. But much more importantly, we have a failing water system. Many of our roads are in disrepair, and stormwater management is a constant issue in our waterfront community. This loan is intended to fund a significant expansion of our existing marina, not just a replacement in kind. It is unnecessary, unhealthy, and irresponsible. You might hear from others that this action was ratified by an overwhelming majority of our property owners. I can assure you, it wasn't. According to ESTAT, we have over 500-plus members in Epping Forest and 400-plus properties. An affirmative vote of 115 falls far short of a majority, no matter who or what you are counting. Even if a majority had voted for this project, that doesn't mean that this project deserves our public funds. My kids often present a very unified front for requesting ice cream for dinner and a 2:30 a.m. bedtime. I don't give it to them.
Thank you, Mr. Shane. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Jeff Stockdale. I'm a resident of Epping Forest. Appreciate all of you for your attention to this. I am here to respectfully urge you to vote no on this bill. I appreciate Councilwoman Rodbien's measure to hold the bill. As some of you may know, there is currently a variance under appeal, and it's premature to move this legislation forward at the time. I want to first be clear, I support the idea of a safe and modern marina, but this proposal places an unacceptable financial burden on hundreds of residents like myself who are not boat club members and do not use the marina. We are being asked to back a 20-year loan that includes a $1 million balloon payment in year 11 on behalf of a few, a few $1.5 million loan on behalf of a few boat owners. But more importantly, the SCBD is meant to support shared community services. It's not to subsidize luxury recreational infrastructure for a few. But if this bill passes, 1/3 of our annual SCBD budget will be tied up repaying this loan. And if the projected marina revenues fall short, which is very likely, the entire community is on the hook for this. We are facing real infrastructure needs. As my neighbor mentioned, our water system is aging and at risk. We have real problems there. We also have crumbling roads and serious stormwater issues. And we need borrowing capacity and the flexibility to address these basic needs, not gamble it away on a project that doesn't serve the whole community. There's also serious safety and environmental concerns. This marina is going to jut out into the channel, blocking longtime swim areas and kayak routes. And the scale and design haven't meaningfully changed since 2022. In lower-cost, lower-risk alternatives were never explored. Thank you again. Frankly, as I said before, this bill is premature. I urge you to vote no.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. I'm Bridgette Stockdale. Thank you all for your time. I also live in Epping Forest alongside my husband, and I think he's hit on many of the points that I wish to address, but I would like to just hit home on the fact that we are a young family trying to make ends meet. And we recently learned that in light of our failing water issues, we're going to be facing somewhere in the range of 3,300 to 4,600 in additional costs annually for the next 10 years, I believe. So, we have not had water. So, you guys know what the situation is with water. It's currently being run by the community, by volunteers, one of whom is 80-plus years old, and bless him, and I thank him for the work that he does. But I can show you a picture of my bathtub filled with water, and it's brown. And there have been three days this month when I have not had running water and been able to brush my teeth or use the bathroom. So, I have a hard time not looking at this project in the context of the broader issues that we have as a community prioritizing, you know, recreation and five 50-foot-plus slips for people with that size of boat when I myself do not even, you know, have a dinghy at the dock. So, I do take issue with some unforeseen amount in the future that could come back on me to pay and my taxes. And again, I don't think that everyone had the transparency and inclusion in this process to understand if alternatives were pursued, why they were not viable. That's something I'd love to see. We were told that this was the only way and that other options were pursued, but we have yet to see any of that information. So, I find it hard to believe that the best and the brightest of our community worked to do this and coming out with the best outcome. I'd like to engage more folks, take a pause, and think about our long-term needs to make sure that we're prioritizing basic needs over the desires of few. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6125? You all may return and bring up some other folks. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everything that you do. My name's Mitch Glazier. I live in Epping Forest at 1700 Robin Hood Road. I just wanted to sort of go over very quickly the process that the community went through, which was substantial over a very long period of time. I appreciate all the concerns that were raised, but they were also raised within the community, within the process that was established. And at the end of the day, a vote was taken and that vote ended up being two to one. There were plenty of information meetings where objections could be heard, where the Boat Club went over every part of the process, where they explained all of the alternatives and all of the pathways. There was a notice for the vote. It was a community-wide vote, not a board vote. When we got to that vote, I made a motion that the community vote on how to vote because this was something that needed to reflect the will of the community. And we took a community-wide vote on the process so that there would be no question, no legal questions about the bylaws. It would be a community-wide vote. Notice was given. A record number of people showed up for that vote. Everybody voted that one person per house would be the way that the vote would proceed. That is the way the vote would proceed. The vote did proceed. All objections were heard. There were plenty of time for questions. And at the end of the day, the will of the community was that this should proceed at the cost to the Boat Club to be repaid in the way that they stated. And the vote was two to one. So this isn't really about relitigating the process that the community went through. This is about observing the will of the community under a valid process. And I really thank you for all of your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Denise Peterson. I am a resident of Epping Forest. I live in the community. I have a boat, but I am not on the water. Some in our community are very privileged where they have their own dock. I don't and I definitely need a place to keep my boat in a marina that's close to my home. The marina that we have is failing. It's old, it's dangerous. There's, you know, danger of electric shock if kids go swimming in that, in that marina. We have to always turn off the, the power when the tides rise. As Mr. Glazer pointed out, it's, we've been through five, six community meetings where lots of people have come and spoken their mind on the pros and cons. The Boat Club has gone to large lengths to explain their program, their, you know, vision for the marina. And I think that there is a very small few of disgruntled people that don't like the way the vote went and they're engaging in shenanigans and lawfare to try and delay, derail, and kill this project. And I think it's shameful. Thank you for listening to me and I appreciate all your service.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, hi. My name is Cory Shultze. I live in Epping Forest. I've been there for almost 20 years. I've also served as past legal chair for four years and past president for four years as well. So I do have some, some experience with, with voting in Epping Forest, certainly. I'd like to say that the way that this vote was done was fully consistent with our bylaws and any, any assertions that we do, that we deviated are simply untrue. There was an effort by some to change the way the voting would work on the eve of the, 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 the meeting. Thankfully, that effort was not successful and we did the vote the way we have historically. Second point I wanted to make, I, I hope that we're not conflating the boat loan, the, the marina loan with Waterworks efforts. The two are distinct. The Boat Club loan is set up to be funded by the slipholders of the Boat Club. And they do, my understanding, they do have enough resources to, to, to fund the loan. Waterworks has its own loan. And unfortunately, the Waterworks took out a loan a few years ago and they encumbered the Boat Club receipts in that process. And when they did that, that meant that the Boat Club was unable to rely on its revenue streams, slipholder fees for a loan. And that's why the Boat Club had to go to the tax revenues to hopefully get a loan through the tax revenues. So the, the two are really on separate paths. Yes, we need Waterworks improvements. Yes, we're doing that, but that's distinct from, from the marina. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So as now, the public hearing on Bill number 6125 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 6125.
Bill number 6125, an ordinance concerning Epping Forest Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
All right. Is there any other discussion for my colleagues? Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to move that we hold the vote until our September, I'm sorry, is it first or second?
Second.
Our, our September, thank you, our September 2nd meeting.
Okay. Just a moment. Ms. Picker, did you have your light on and I missed you? I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So we have a, a motion to hold the bill until September 2nd?
Second.
We have a second? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill number 61.
No discussion on that?
No. No, there's no discussion on holding the vote.
So just for clarification, if we vote to hold this bill, we're holding the vote and we've closed the public hearing. There will not be another public hearing based on this motion. And this motion is actually not debatable, so I shouldn't even be talking right now.
That, that is a point of order. So yes, it's kind of, the public hearing is now closed on this. There will not be enough, there are opportunity for the public to speak on this bill. However, you can submit written testimony, but there will not, no, oh, they cannot. I'm sorry. I got that wrong. Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. So, but this closes the public hearing on this bill. Yes. So.
Okay. Second.
It, that's true. It does not preclude the public from sending us emails directly, but there will, it will not be public comment from, it won't go through the portal, correct? Mr. Smith?
I know we're, I know, this is point of order and I know we're in the middle of this, this, this vote, so I don't know what the right time, but I did have a question for the admin.
Can we do that?
We can. If we hold the motion to hold, we can discuss it and then we can go.
Okay.
If the sponsor withdraws, I'll withdraw my motion.
Ms. Rodvian, there's some further questions. Would you be, would, would you withdraw your amendment to, to hold so we could have further discussion?
I will withdraw my motion to hold it with the intent of bringing it back after further discussion.
Okay. And Mr. Volkey withdraws his second. So, Mr. Smith?
Quick question for the, thank you, Madam Chair. The admin, with the 45-day gap that we have between now and the next, do you all have any concerns about the delay? As, I mean, obviously you guys brought it forward, so you are supportive of it. What, what are the concerns with the delay that, that, and any potential conflicts?
From an administrative perspective, we don't have concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Picker.
I believe the two-to-one majority that voted for this would have a problem with the delay as they wanting to have this project under construction in October. So they're going to have a problem if we delay this vote tonight and then we don't vote on it or potentially hold it till the second, then that's another 45 days till it goes into effect.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the only reason that I'm going to support this is because the councilperson for your district is requesting it. That's, that's the reason for it, to be clear. But ultimately, it sounds to me like the process that the community engaged in was a very good process. It sounds like it was all above board. And while I certainly can understand the concerns of people who are on the losing side of the vote, because it happens to us up here a lot, especially with how we spend money, right? At a certain level, that's just how it goes, right? That's majority voting and that's just what you have to deal with. I don't always like the way that my taxpayer dollars get spent here in Anarondle County and I have a voice in that and I still lose those votes regularly. So, you know, that's the process. But with that said, because the council member for this district is requesting it, that tends to be where I line up, is that I'm going to respect what that person has said. So in that regard, that is where my willingness to second on this and ultimately to vote is, but I am deep down supportive of what the community is trying to do because y'all did the right process. It sounds like you did everything over and above what you were supposed to do. So kudos to you and I'm sorry for the delay. I apologize, but clearly your representative has something that they want to get answered and that's something that needs to be dealt with here on the council.
Ms. Picker.
So that is the question I have. Between now and September 2nd, what information is coming to light that makes this vote any different? What, what are we, because this, we, we do, things and loans with SCBDs do come before the council, but the work and the vote happens within the community and that appears to have happened. So what are we going to learn between now and September 2nd that is going to change any when, any way that any of us is going to vote, other than to delay a project that's going to then hinder potentially summer use of their, of their amenities next, next year? October is the prime time to do this work. I don't know why, I don't know what's on the table. What is, what is in question? That's, I don't understand why we would hold. What are, what are we worried about? That's my, I'm not voting to hold.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. I received a significant amount of information this morning. Too much volume to even possibly go over, over the course of a single day, much less have an opportunity to talk with our, with the Office of Law about how this should be, how the information should be viewed. And I, I think it's fair to request a hold to review the additional information that was received.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with Mr. Volkey. I'm, I'm going to support the hold this evening because I was actually one of, I think, the first in the two councils that I've sat on that requested a hold on an SCBD for my district. I feel like I almost created the slippery slope of getting involved in SCBDs. If I could go back in time, I don't know that I would make the same action, but out of councilmanic courtesy, because this is complicated and the courtesy was given to me when I was stuck, I'm going to vote for the hold this evening. It probably will not change where I will be ultimately, but out of respect for my colleague, I am going on with that.
And I just, for members of the audience to clarify, when it comes to SCBDs, we as a council are not actually voting on the merits of a project. We are voting on your request, the SCBD's request for how to use their money. We don't say we think this is a good project or a bad project. We are just approving the underlying request because this is your funds that we just collect for you and then distribute as you, as a community vote on to have. So, all right. Seeing no further comments from my colleagues, Ms. Rodvian.
I would like to renew my motion to hold the vote until our September 2nd meeting.
Second from Mr. Volkey. So, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill number 6125 until September 2nd.
Ms. Pickered?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill number 6125 until September 2nd has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 6225.
Bill number 6225, an ordinance concerning public works watershed protection and restoration program.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney, Eric Michelson, our Senior Environmental Policy Officer in the Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration, as well as Sally Sidlowski, our Stormwater Fee Program Manager. This bill was discussed at the work session, but just to refresh your memory, so this bill makes seven changes to the portion of the code that deals with the watershed restoration and protection fee. Four of them relate to how calculations for stormwater fees are made in certain instances. Over the years, there've been a number of sort of one-off, odd, or unique situations that has, have caused the fee to be assessed inconsistently depending on how the property is classified in ESTAT. And some of the other changes are, do not affect how the fee is calculated. Happy to go into those in more detail if you would like or answer any questions.
Okay.
And we do have an amendment that we can discuss at the appropriate time.
Okay. Is there any discussion? No one? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 6225. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill number 6225? Please come to the table and have a seat. When is your turn? State your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Steve Miller and I live at 613 Samantha Court, Annapolis. I'm an HOA president, member of the Citizens Environmental Commission, and I participated in the stormwater work group led by inspections and permits. Overall, I believe Bill 6225 nicely corrects some shortfalls with current code, but it should be postponed to address other issues. Most important one is the transparency and accuracy of information used to determine fees for HOAs. I recently used several online county tools and the plans for our community to try to determine how the fee was calculated for one of our parcels. I also engaged with the county to get maps of the private impervious surface that they had plotted. There appears to be an error because some public sidewalks were deemed private. The HOA must file an appeal to get it reviewed and changed. Code should be improved by requiring the as-built plans for new development to clearly identify the type and square footage of non-residential impervious surface, not only to accurately account for the remediation fee, but to provide the HOA with useful information for their state-mandated reserve studies. You heard during the work session that there has not been an outside audit of the process or accuracy of the data used in determining the remediation fee. After 10 years, shouldn't there be? In addition, current policies allow 50% credit on stormwater fees that an application is submitted by a qualified HOA. I know that there's a proposed amendment on, amendment on this, but I want to say that the credit should at a minimum be codified and implied automatically when the HOA's remediation fees are calculated post-development. Really, the fee should be eliminated since these HOAs already budget for their current and future maintenance and repair of the entire private stormwater management system. I hope this will be considered as this bill looks at this amendment.
Ms. Fox.
Good evening. I'm Kate Fox. I live in Davidsonville and I'm Chair of the GAN Legislative Committee. I also want to add that Steve is the Chairman of the GAN Stormwater Committee and our go-to person for questions about stormwater management. We have worked very closely with Steve to, in identifying the amendments that we suggested in communication to you all. The aspect of this bill I want to address is that provisions for HOAs need a closer look before this bill is voted on. Under this bill, the stormwater remediation fee that a developer pays for a private road during the development period would change from a base flat rate fee to the higher fee the HOA would pay when the completed roads and associated structures have been inspected, the as-built plans approved, and management is turned over to the HOA. HOAs for newer communities created using environmental site-designed stormwater management systems should be paying less in stormwater remediation fees because the stormwater best management practices already manage the stormwater to help protect our watersheds. In addition, all HOAs will be responsible for maintaining and repairing these systems and replacing them after the lifetime of the BMPs has ended. Current code allows for a 50% reduction in the remediation fee for these communities, but the communities must apply for the fee and many don't know about it. At the very least, the bill should may, be making the credit for the fee automatic once all the inspections are completed and the handoff from the developer has occurred. It should also be retroactive to any HOAs that qualify but are unaware of the 50% credit. I hope you approve the amendment proposed for this bill, which will allow more time for us to effectively address these concerns. Thank you for your consideration of these provisions.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak? Okay. The public hearing on Bill number 6225 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 6225.
Bill number 6225, an ordinance concerning public works watershed protection and restoration program.
Okay. There is one amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment allows for a stormwater remediation fee reduction for properties containing stormwater management practices installed in association with the development completed after July 1, 2026.
All right. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Michelson, who can explain this much more coherently than I can.
Eric Michelson, Deputy Director, Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration. Yes, so this amendment was prepared in direct response to some of the public feedback that we've gotten and speaks to the previous testimony that was given. This, it would allow, in the code currently, there's a provision that allows for the creation of a credit and we have a credit program and have since the program's inception. What this would do essentially is recognize that new projects going forward essentially that have the state-of-the-art stormwater management would automatically have that 50% credit applied to those development projects going forward as was suggested with the handoff from inspections and permits and the final inspection of those practices. So it would make it a, there would not have to be a sort of proactive process. It would happen passively as those projects are approved through the county process.
Okay. All right. Are there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank Mr. Michelson, Mr. Hunt, for conversing with me today and over the weekend. So I know we've talked about the internal audit and I understand the cumbersome nature for the county to do an internal audit. But I'm also concerned that there may be a mismeasurement with at least one community. To date, we have not had any appeals filed except for, I guess, this one. Is that correct?
My name is Sally Sidlowski and I'm Stormwater Fee Program Manager. So we do have an appeal process that people can apply for any time for the past, let's see. Last year, we had eight appeals and I'd say for the past five years, it's been less than 10 a year, but it is open. The way it works, if you apply and it's approved, you can get on the current year and back three years corrected. That can be for any matter. We're happy to, to take a look.
Of the appeals that have happened in the past, have any found that there was a mismeasurement?
Occasionally, the way, so we have the impervious layer, but it also has the parcels, the parcel data, and occasionally just there's slight misalignment. There's thousands and thousands of parcels in the county. So we tried it, especially going forward, anytime we're building a new property, we do visually look at that before we build them for the first time. But as the fee is 10 years old, some of the earlier ones may not have ever reviewed at that level, but if we ever catch that at any point, we'll correct it going forward. But if we ever catch that at any point, we'll correct it going forward. If an HOA contacts us, we'll take a look, and if we see something off, we'll recommend they file an appeal, so they can go back to three years. So, there are occasional instances, mainly because property lines can, especially with encroachments and things, especially HOA properties, there's sheds on the end of, edge of residential lots and things like that, that may accidentally be included. So, for anything new, we think we've done a pretty good job catching it, but there, in the past, there may have been some that's missed. So, we try to do continuous cleanup. Anytime we find it, we will correct it going forward, but there may be some minor ones in there as well.
I can certainly appreciate that. We talked about misalignment in the maps during all of comprehensive rezoning, and certainly moving forward. For all of those that there was a mismeasurement found, is it in the favor of the HOA property or the county? Like, are we overcalculating or undercalculating square footage?
I'd say for HOA areas, it's probably more likely an overcalculation, overcharge, just because they may have, the things that can encourage them are pretty common, like the sheds, like public sidewalk, other properties that are there. It's just, because lots of times, they're open, grassy areas, and things kind of creep in, or private driveways, they may go in. So, but we have been trying to, doing our best to catch that. I would say more likely a overcharge than undercharge.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Michelson, when we passed this, and I remember going through this process in 2013, and how much friction was created when it was being put in place. And since then, we've done hundreds of projects throughout the county, so I'm definitely glad I voted. My vote definitely mattered when it needed it the most. And so, but I would like to sit down with you at some point here over the coming months, when you get a moment, to talk about what happens when projects don't address some of the water issues, or, but most of them have. This is probably a rare occurrence, but there have been like one that I may be aware of, but I can speak to you after, when we have a Zoom meeting here in the future. But I'm definitely proud of this program. I'm glad we passed it back then, because it's definitely paid dividends for the county. And so, I just wanted to put that on your radar and say thanks for sort of being tied to this since its inception. You've been the face of it. I don't know if that's good or bad, but you've definitely been the face of it. So, thank you for all the hard work. Appreciate you.
Thanks, I appreciate that, and happy to talk anytime.
Thanks.
Okay. So, the administration has put forth an amendment. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Second. All right. Any discussion about the amendment? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Okay. Bill Number 6525, as amended, will be heard on September 2nd, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6325.
Bill Number 6325, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements For Special Exception Uses Community Peers In Launching Ramps.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a follow-up to Bill 1625 that we passed earlier this year. There were two components to the bill. One of those triggered a review, or potential review, from the Critical Area Commission. Critical Area Commission did submit a preliminary note that they had concerns about the portion that involved the critical area. That section was to allow for disturbance of the buffer for ADA accessibility to peers. And talking to planning and zoning, there is a provision for flexibility for ADA improvements within 1813-105, and to not hold up the non-CAC, Critical Area Commission, portion of the bill. I am removing that in this legislation, and I ask for my colleagues' support this evening.
Okay. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. And I have Lori Blair Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney, at the table with me. We support this bill, happy to answer any questions, but as it is a recommendation from the Critical Area Commission regarding prior legislation, we would urge the council to adopt it.
Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I remember, we discussed this at the work session, but if I remember correctly, there's still ADA requirements in code. This does not undo any of that.
Well, the current ADA requirements in code are only a reference point for flexibility in 1813-105. True ADA language comes from federal law and state, but I actually introduced legislation this evening that will add ADA references or ADA language to our code. But there is already provision for flexibility existing in the code.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6325. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6325? Seeing no movement, public hearing on Bill Number 6325 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6325.
Bill Number 6325, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements For Special Exception Uses Community Peers In Launching Ramps.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 6325.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6325 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1925.
Resolution Number 1925, Resolution Confirming Appointments To The Board Of Trustees For The Anarundale County Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
Okay. Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Resolution 1925 makes three appointments to the health, I'm sorry, the Retiree Health Benefits Trust, also known as the OPEB Trust. It appoints Doug Hart, who's a retiree who retired as a nonrepresented employee in the classified service, and also reappoints Ryan Atkinson, also known as Obie, who is nominated by a majority of the presidents of the county uniformed public safety unions, as well as Kevin Nethers, who is nominated by a majority of the presidents of the non-uniformed public safety unions. Their terms begin July 1st and expire June 30th of 2028.
Does the bill language actually say "also known as Obie"?
No. It does not.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 1925. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
Okay. No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 1925? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution Number 1925 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1925.
Resolution Number 1925, Resolution Confirming Appointments To The Board Of Trustees For The Anarundale County Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1925.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1925 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2125.
I will read Resolution Number 2125 in its entirety for the record. Resolution Appointing Members Of The Salary Standard Commission. Whereas pursuant to Section 319101 of the county code, there is a salary standard commission that shall report to the county council in accordance with Section 10302 of the Local Government Article of the State Code. And whereas the commission is tasked with recommending compensation and allowances to be paid to members of the county council. And whereas the commission shall consist of seven members appointed by the county council, now therefore be it resolved by the county council of Anarundale County, Maryland, that it hereby appoints the following persons to serve as members of the Salary Standard Commission. Daniel McGinty, Robert Wagner, David Morseberger, Scott Howard, Michael Cox, Sharon Blugis, and Natasha Hillsman.